And public comment is on council time agenda items.
I understand that, thank you. My name is Heidi Cody. I'm with Alliance for Community. I think so. Can you hear me? Okay, sorry, I'll try to speak a little bit closer. My name is Heidi Cody. I'm with Alliance for Community Engagement, also known as ACE, and we advocate for strong and equitable climate policy in and around southwest Washington. I'm here to speak to a policy issue known as the Comprehensive Plan. I'll make my comments brief. I want to say that ACE supports Clark County taking crucial steps to protect public health and safety by including climate and resiliency in a greenhouse gas emissions reduction plan in the Comprehensive Plan. Clark County residents really do care about this issue, and we want Clark County Council to take this issue seriously. How the county chooses to grow has a huge implications on what our future will look like. Will we develop Clark County with future generations in mind or not? Will we be resilient in the face of increasing climate impacts over the next 20 years and beyond or not? Those are the issues that are on the line. I'd like to also thank the members of Clark County Council who have met with ACE and staff members who have met with ACE. We appreciate all opportunities that are given to us to meet with you and encourage a better future for all of us by implementing protective policies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and sorry you had to wait so long for that.
Kathy Garber.
Good morning. So I am Kathy Garber. I work in the Elections Office, as most of you know, which is located on the campus here, kind of over by ourselves. And since 2022, I understand there's been a 9% increase in homelessness. Now, we do have compassion and empathy for the people that are homeless around our campus, but as you know, some of the homeless are in active addiction and different stages of mental health crisis. The campus area is used by many of these people to take drugs, sleep, and use as a bathroom. We commonly find drug paraphernalia, clothing, feces. All of this is very common right around our building. We will find people sleeping in our doorways. There is graffiti on the building, and there is destruction of the signage that directs our citizens where to go, our hours of operation. We actually have fires that are set right outside our building for them to either keep warm or cook. We're not quite sure what they're doing, but there have been many fires located outside our building. As you also know, there's a large group of full-time campers right out on Mill Plain. Where are these folks going, the bathroom? It's on our campus. Employees have been chased, harassed, and threatened, trying to get to their car or to go to work or to leave. I myself had a very scary incident, I think it was two summers ago, where I was the last one in our office working, and I went to my car, and as I walked out, I saw two young men shooting up drugs between their toes and another man being in the middle of a mental health episode in the parking lot. I went to my car. My car did not start, and I called AAA, and the young man started circling my car, and I felt very threatened. It was a very scary situation. After that, we decided that no one will work late in this building, and when we walk to our cars, we must go in groups of two to remain safe. We are not safe in the building after hours. We actually have an agreement with the building owner across Franklin Street, so after hours or on the weekend, we can park in that parking lot, so we can at least see our front door from where we are. We just feel that fencing would protect the public's property and also make employees and citizens feel much safer coming to our office. It would also help retain good employees, because we want our employees to feel safe. So I just urge you to consider and accept the fencing policy and allow this to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, we do have a hand up in the back.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Heather Tishbine. My address is 1119 Northwest 131st Way, Unit A, in Salmon Creek Estates. I'm here as a citizen and a voice for the vulnerable and overburdened community of children. This is their future that we're planning in terms of the Comprehensive Plan update, and they don't have an institutionalized voice, stakeholder voice, as the BIA does. So I just want to encourage the county council and community planning, when they set up their public engagement plan, that they take a serious look at how to include those voices as institutional stakeholders. It would be a new voice. The IAP2, International Association for Public Participation, has a matrix, not a matrix, a continuum of public participation practices used by public participation professionals. On the right end of that continuum of public participation is what's called the empowerment realm, where there are well-practiced, well-understood public participation processes that would give voice to heretofore overburdened and vulnerable voices who have not had a clear institutional framework in our comprehensive planning. So I encourage you to investigate that. I have experience in that work, so I'm here to volunteer as a retired person and a grandmother of two grandsons, and I have their future and their children's future in mind. I don't expect to live to be a great grandmother, but I'm enjoying being a grandmother. One other thing I'd like to call your attention to is that the Frameworks Plan has not been updated since it was first put together in 1993, the Community Frameworks Section of the Comprehensive Plan. So much has changed since 1993, and things are changing so rapidly now in face of climate change and droughts, fires, food chain interruptions, that I encourage you all to consider doing an update on the community frameworks aspect of the Comprehensive Plan. I think 30 years is a long time to go without reconsidering the reality that we're in today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bridgette McClellan.
My name's Bridgette McClellan, and I live on 29th Avenue. I don't see anything in the ordinance relating to the adverse impacts of camping about fencing. I don't know why if that's one of the primary goals. It's not included. But the point about putting up fencing around public buildings is that you're using taxpayer money to protect the county's property, but there are hundreds of homemakers out there who are suffering the consequences. So what we need is an overall plan. And to introduce this resolution at a time when the city is looking at its affordable housing fund and how to move ahead, ECHO is looking at very alternatives, very, very alternatives for safe space sites of some sort or another, and we have a hard team. I don't see them mentioned in this proposal. I have a specific problem with the definition section in the resolution, which talks about camping is for recreational purposes, and then goes into different definitions of camping and outside habitation. The liability section appears to absolve the county and any of its staff, or presumably that includes the sheriff's office, from any liability during enforcement. What we've seen work is multidisciplinary teams going to address whether it's mental health needs or behavioral substance use issues. So this is premature, I think. As part of a solution to a bigger problem that we've addressed and looked at the causes, all this one does is shift liability to that temporary solution of moving someone on from where they are. Where they're meant to go to, who knows? We have no provisions for enough sites to get people off the streets. I agree, it's appalling to have people sleeping on the streets and the sidewalks, and I have every sympathy with the staff who have to head through the mess every day and take risks. But until we solve the bigger problem, this is just shifting it, and it's protecting a subcategory of people, just those who work in the county office or whatever. So I applaud the work ECHO is doing. I applaud the work the city is doing, and we need a plan. We don't need random resolutions. We pick on one facet of the problem and not address the others. We need options. We need viable options, and we need somewhere the people can be safe and secure, both the residents, the employees, and--
Thank you for your comments, and you'd probably be interested to know of all the plans we do have in place, including the Homeless Action Plan, and we're spending about $15 million a year on all of the programming that you're mentioning. This is just one aspect, and it's for the public as well. So there is a lot going on between the city, ECHO, all the cities, and the county. We are doing our best to provide resources to the community. We have other public comments. Greg, I see you're raising your hand. Please step forward, and thank you for your office presence today.
Yeah, thank you, and I'm sorry. I didn't realize. I'm supposed to sign in advance. Well, I thought Kathy Garber did an excellent job in describing the challenges that our employees are facing as a result of the access to the campus after hours. And I certainly agree with the previous comments by the previous speaker, Ms. McClellan. This is a very large problem. This enclosure around the campus will not solve this problem, but what it will do is will significantly make it a much safer place for our employees to work, to come to work. When I first heard about this enclosure fence proposal, I was concerned that it was going to be making it too difficult for the public to access their public buildings. But as I've seen the draft plans, very rough sketch, it seems like it's very, it still maintains very easy access for the public to access their buildings. So I strongly support this proposal. Yeah, it's not a complete solution to the entire problem, but it does address a really big problem here on the campus. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other speakers in the room? Okay, I've seen--
No, I don't--
--a bit of nods, no. How about online?
We do have a couple online. John Latta, please go ahead and make your statement.
Counselors, I'm John Latta. I'm living in Washougal. I was a charter review commissioner elected in 2020, serving during the year of 2021, and I'd like to talk about the proposed charter amendment that's on the agenda. The proposal seems to be attempting to rescind a change that was approved by voters in 2021 to make the charter review commission's term be two years. And so I think it's a little early to be doing that, since we haven't even gone one cycle yet. And the proposed additions to the Charter, Section 9.1, that described the charter amendment process, it has some good ideas, a lot of things that we did. All this seems like good information to be shared with future charter commissions, but it doesn't seem like something that needs to be codified in the county charter. It's we can tell the charter commissioners about it and let them run their show. Specifically, one of the problems in it is for Bravo that would require a legal advisor for every subcommittee meeting. It will, I think that would either require the county to hire a lot more lawyers or it'll severe, it will limit the ability to hold subcommittee meetings. It's unnecessary, and I'm against it. I think the amendment seems to be adding requirements that are already part of the Public Meetings Act. You know that they're going to follow the Public Meetings Act anyway, so it doesn't need to be added to the charter. I don't think it's a necessary change. I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, online.
Caller, please go ahead and state your name and your comments.
This is Kimberly Goheen Eldon, life citizen of Clark County, Washington. I'm out here working a festival here at a farm, so I didn't intend to speak today, but this homelessness fits into the growth management and the comprehensive plan and all of those that this council follows, which as stated earlier, is actually following United Nations entity to have that One World Order and to govern the people instead of the people governing you.
So I don't know that that relates to any--
We do not know--
--anything on the agenda today, ma'am. And we've certainly heard you say the same speech about 100 times. Do you have anything on the agenda today that you would like to comment on? Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
That concludes our public comment.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to the Ordinance Office. We have certainly heard the same comments from our own staff, from CRESSA, from the regional transportation, basically all the tenants of the courthouse, this building, all the surrounding buildings who need to come here for work, and all the public that needs to come and go. We've seen that as well. We did have homeless gentlemen living in our elevator in the parking garage that a citizen came across and was scared to death as a result of the interaction with her child and the camper. Any case, we'll get to that topic in a moment. I'm wondering if, I mean, we are kind of on schedule. Does anyone need another break or just--
I would just like five minutes.
Okay, so we're going to take five minutes with everyone's patience. So, kind of, we'll resume approximately. All right, so we have old business. Any motion on the--
I would move approval of the minutes.
We don't have any choices today, do we? I'll second that.
All right, cool. Any corrections or comments? We'll go ahead and approve those minutes. Now, regarding the encampment policy fencing, among clears, are we, just, what are we approving? The resolution or are we going to have a further--
There's no approvals today. Amber's going to go over the initial draft of the resolution. It has not been reviewed by all the stakeholders, including legal, and then looking at the fencing options. So to continue that discussion from the last time, council, they asked for alternatives to fencing and then also the encampment policy. So Amber will take the lead on--
Okay.
--writing an update.
Take it away, Amber.
Good morning, thank you. So, council, last time we met about this policy, you asked for a couple alternatives to the fencing as well as some data points. Counselor Young, you asked for some data with the vandalism that we have on the campus. So I have both of those to share with you today, as well as we can talk more about the fencing. And then last, we can talk about the ordinance. Since we last spoke, CCSO has given me their feedback on what they would like in the ordinance. I'll have Kristin bring that up to when we get to that point. We can discuss and look at it from that point of view. As Kathleen mentioned, has not went through our civil PA process yet, so we're only looking at this as a draft of what the ordinance is, and we can talk about where we've gleaned the information from on the draft. So first, I want to talk about the security, 24/7 security. So Counselor Marshall, in our last discussion, you talked about a security option for, in lieu of the fencing. So we pulled some very rough draft information for 24/7 security. As you all know, we pay for security now during the day. That's about $1.26 million that we pay for our security contracts throughout the campus. This would be a little bit more of an enhanced security. So we would want folks to hire a company that would be one probably armed, as most folks are during, over the night, and it's going to come at a higher cost. So the rough estimates we've received for that is around $613,000 a year, and that's for nighttime, holidays, and that's 24, that's the 24-hour after our other security ends, and that would also include a vehicle and some cellphone coverage, because we'd want to be able to have to communicate. So we've included that in the overall estimate. And of course, that would be an ongoing cost yearly for that particular contract. So if I said that too fast, $613,000 for that. That would be the extra security cost for that. A couple other things that we looked into, and I don't know if this would be considered in lieu of fencing, that we wanted to give this out to council for consideration, is elections. And I know that Greg's in the audience. We did a film on elections windows, I believe, last year, Greg, the filming on the windows or the year before that, yeah. So, as you know, we have a lot of rocks go through the bottom of our PSC, damaging the windows, so we would want to look at potentially putting up the film that's been placed in some other areas. But I wouldn't necessarily say that would be an alternative to fencing, but maybe another option. So that would be for all the bottom film of the windows. We would look at something in between, not necessarily the bulletproof film, but something that would be more of a riot. I'm going to say that correctly, Mike. The riot film, which would sustain a rock going through the window, that would roughly be about $100,000 to $150,000 for the whole bottom of the PSC building for all the windows. Do you want to ask a question, Counselor Mevige?
So, if we get to a perimeter--
Yep.
--that's more secure, and we do have walking security, would we really need to then harden the windows and do things like that?
Not necessarily. So I just want to make sure you have all the options to consider and what we're looking at, so that you have everything that we've looked at. What I will say, when you're looking at, and we can get to that when we get to the map, the fencing will not go along the windows on the outside. And yes, of course, during the security walking and CCSO presence, it's getting limited. So we would want to, the fencing will not go around the windows that go along the whole side of the perimeter. So I just wanted to give that as an option. Kathleen, do you want to--
Yeah, and I think we do need to look at it, at least--
Yes.
--with the front windows or public facing of the Ordinance Office, because we just had somebody throw a very large rock during the day that injured a security guard.
Exactly.
So fencing's not going to stop that--
No.
--if there's no fencing right in front of it.
Yeah, and I was going to ask that you give, I mean, besides that incident--
Yes.
--I mean, we have fires that were--
Right.
--we've had, and that vandalism, it's arson. We've had damage as a result--
Totally.
--broken windows and frames, and ongoing costs for pickup--
Yes.
--trash and cleanup--
Yes.
--power washing that costs an extraordinary amount of money and then is dirty again the next week. I was hoping that you would highlight some of what's really happening here besides the injury to the security that was incredibly disappointing.
Absolutely.
If I could just make a really quick comment--
Yes, Counselor--
--I appreciate all the options, and I think it's not necessarily an either/or, but some combination--
Yes.
--that can address what the needs are.
We wanted you to have everything, and we do have the stats, Counselor Mevige, and I'll both bring those up for 2022, because Counselor Young asked for that also in the last meeting. And that shows all of our work orders, and it has in detail what staff is encountering and also the hours that are behind that. So we do have that information.
And that includes the breaking into the fleet and the stealing of the power--
I have that separate, yes. I'll go over those numbers as well. Mike, do you want to add anything about the film, because you did the research on that piece with Michelle?
It worked there. Yeah, along with facility and stuff, just some preliminary things. We found a company, and I don't know if there's others, but I believe they're the only one, that offer three different layers of film. And one of the things, again, we just talked about it, the front of the building under the current plan for fencing isn't supposed to have fencing out in the courtyard area and those kind of things. So at least, we should look at, in my opinion, security-wise, we should look at what areas aren't covered by that fencing, et cetera, and look at the riot control film, which is kind of the moderate price. I kind of, taken a look at it, was the company's guaranteeing that it can't be penetrated for 15 minutes. So that can help us both, you know, after hours where we have a few guards around, you know, if we do go that direction, because they can't be in every location at every time. And I think it's something we need to look at, a comprehensive physical security plan with fencing, some film, personal security with the security guards, and then all of the admin that goes with it, the ordinance and the policies that come off of that, so.
Thank you, Mike.
I have a quick question about the film.
Yes.
I'm assuming that the film does not stop the glass from breaking. It just stops whatever the projectile is from entering into the space. So we would still then have the expense of replacing the glass, and then the film again as well?
Yeah, that's correct. It doesn't stop it from breaking, but I don't think there's a film out there that does. So, real quick, as you can see down below, already coming into the entrance, we specifically chose to start putting metal up, replacing some of those lower sections that people have been kicking out, so that somebody couldn't access our building on a weekend when we're not here to know that it had happened. Some of those kind of things, you know, the entrance used to be all glass coming into the PSC, and now we've had to put up metal. We're going to lose the glass one way or the other.
Will the film prevent entry?
Yeah, the riot, so they have three different, this particular company has a smash film, a riot film, and a bullet resistance film. The smash film is typically what you would see at department stores, those kind of things. The riot film, again, is guaranteed by the company to withstand 15 minutes worth of, and I've seen the demonstrations and stuff online, literally somebody beating just a pane of glass in what would be like an easel. It's not even mounted into a building already with an aluminum base small bat, and it meant the bat. It did smash the window, but nobody could have gotten into that window. Of course, again, that was their demonstration of that. And then they have, again, a bullet resistance film that can be put into just about anywhere. So I'd really like, and I've started some conversations with other folks in the county, just kind of talking about where would it be good for us to put this, both outside and potentially, like some of the bullet resistance, inside. So--
So obviously, we don't have the full board here today either. My question goes to the original rendering of where the perimeter goes. Has that matured? Are we ready to--
Can you bring that up, Kristin? So it's just, it's a hand drawn, and you can see where there's gates that would open. They're sliding or man doors at this time.
Yes. Yeah, I can definitely go over that. I can go over, Counselor Young and I walked it one night with Mike, so we'll go over the perimeter fencing piece. So it starts out here, and I think there was some dialogue, and I know that there was some concern with the public that the fencing was going to go in front of the courtyard and along the side. And as Mr. Kimsey brought up in his public comment, it's not intended to block any of the public area coming into the building. So the fencing would not be visible from the front walkway. Where the fencing would start is on the side of the PSC, between the PSC and CRESSA, and that was where you would see a gate that would be closed during the weekends and at night, so it could keep our parking safe, and then go along the corridor, like down CRESSA, down facilities. There's already some fencing already in front of our facilities building down there and a gate, and then down to the medical examiner's office, where we have a lot of issues down in that area. That's completely exposed and open. Go ahead, Counselor Mevige.
Well, so, you know, we've heard from the court and their situation. Is there enhanced security being handled separately as far as their parking area?
We're going to bring that in. I'll talk about that when we talk about costs. Yes, the judicial branch has put in a package for their parking lot, where the judges park, because it is exposed, and it's been open. When I worked over there for the last, it's been open since the dawn of time. So we need to address that as well. And they put in a package, District Court and Superior Court. So we'll be talking about that as part of the packaging as well. So, again, down to the medical examiner's office, takes a corner, and then WSP has inquired about, as we talked about last time, partnering with us to put some fencing in, and there would be, of course, some gating that would go in there. And then it would circle around the backside of Mill Plain, coming, I'm sorry, directionally. And then it would circle around the backside of Mill Plain, coming, I'm sorry, directionally, Mill Plain down here towards Elections Building and where the PSC parking garage. And as we talked about last discussion, our fleet sits in the back between where our employees park and then between WSP and Cressa. So that whole side duct there is most of our fleet in the back. And then the gating would come, come along Elections, and then it would come, the gate would come in front of the parking garage to be able to enclose that during off hours. And that would be open, of course, during public hours. Any questions or anything you want to add, Kathleen, on the map before we move on?
Just two quick things. You know, for example, so we've been bargaining with our medical examiner team over the last few months, and this is one of their number-one issues. We have a single investigator, female, who works at night, who has to bring in deceased individuals, and we have people who are sleeping behind the bushes right by their building, and they can't see them. And we've increased lighting and stuff, so it is one of their top concerns, as it is with a lot of our staff, as the Otter's staff has shared this morning, this is a top concern for them. I do also want to note just really quickly, and I agree with Amber on how this is set up, it does not include the area out front. But I do want to be honest and transparent that the sheriff has asked me, he wants it out to the sidewalk to include the entire front of the courtyard in our building. So I want to make sure, you know, I agree with Amber and how it is being recommended here, but he has a different view on that. He would like it out to the sidewalks, and we're looking at jurisdictional lines. And then are you going to talk about cameras too, or do you?
Okay. Cameras, Kathleen, and then we can.
Yeah, so IT is also being pulled into this discussion. They have actually walked the campus downtown already to look at where current cameras are. Not all areas of our garage is covered by cameras. And it's for two reasons. One, consolidating, we have some spaces that have three different cameras that go to three different departments, so it's consolidating to one and making sure that the sheriff's office has access to all those cameras at all times, and also making sure that every area is covered as well, because, like I said, there are a lot of areas that are not covered by cameras, just to help, like if there's an issue, the sheriff's office can view it from their room to see, okay, what's going on here, and do we need to respond as well?
I hit my button. One thing I'll add to that, and I had Kristin bring up some of the camera packages that were submitted during our capital request. As Kathleen mentioned, they're all individual, so we have nothing that's kind of funneled into one system. So our goal is to, the courts, there's a lot of blind sides on some of the courthouse buildings, when the jail's remodeled to address the camera placement when the jail, so that's also facing the courthouse. So there'll be enhancements, but this is, each area is submitting packages because there's security concerns for each area that we have right now. So that's security, the cameras need to be expanded throughout the campus for each of our areas. Anything you want to add on that, Kathleen, before we move on?
The only other thing, we have two, obviously, we have not gone out for a formal bid yet or chosen, but we do have two photos that we can share of different types of fencing that could be looked at. One is our current PA's office, and what they currently have, which is this fence right here, it's more hardcore, you can't move it at all, and there's a gate. And then the second one is, I believe, at the legacy Salmon Creek Hospital area, it would be the first one. That's the gate for the PA's office, that one.
Yeah, that's.
So what the fencing that's being looked at is not just a normal wire fence that can be easily manipulated or damaged or broken into, and it's not completely unsightly as well. So we want to make sure that it doesn't look like we're in a prison and still be welcoming, but also withstand people who may want to still try to enter the campus after hours.
Any questions on that before we move to data?
I don't have questions, just additional comments because you mentioned some anecdotes, but, and I had mentioned the RTC, I'm on the RTC, I chair it right now, and, you know, they have expressed that they are considering moving, canceling their lease, because their staff, including female staff, feel like they're under siege. And when you look at all the incidents around this campus, it begins to feel like that. You know, courthouses themselves are individual security issues. I came from a county where, you know, we had guns smuggled in, we had shooting incidents, we had a defense attorney shot in the parking lot outside the courthouse. I mean, these are real security issues that are also complicated by the homeless situation here. And I, and you know, I talk to the homeless just about every day that I'm here, and a good number of them just don't want help. They're just here, and they're going to do what they want. So in that regard, I'm really disappointed that, you know, the heart team is not, I saw JB and the heart team there once after one of our echo meetings, they stopped and talked to some of them there. You know, a heart team or a heart team-like appearance by the sheriff should be here every day. Counsel for the homeless, and I always ask them, are you dealing with the council for the homeless? Are they helping you? When was the last time you talked to someone? They should be here every day. Some appearance, the one gentleman I was talking to literally for about 20 minutes this morning before the Board of Health, he's actually a client of the shelter right across the street, and he's not an issue. But when you get all these issues kind of merging into one location without, you know, our own security right now is completely hands-off. I mean, they don't, someone could be unconscious or comatose out in the pavilion, and they wouldn't even call 311, much less 911 to get them help. So we have a lot of initiatives going on. The newest one with the sheriff, besides getting kind of like a heart team response, is a co-responder. I mean, that's supposed to be starting as a pilot with the sheriff's department. It's just barely begun with Vancouver. You know, that'll bring great success, I'm hoping, with those who are mentally ill and addicted, and you see the paraphernalia, I mean, I've taken pictures of it. There's, it's out there right now, you know, of active drug use around our building. That should not be tolerated by society for the benefit of those who are suffering through it. I mean, they're completely, impulse control is gone, they are just dying slowly on our pavement next to the building. And so we need to bring those resources to address that, aside from any security perimeter fencing. All of this goes hand in hand with all efforts that are ongoing with the city and the county. We don't have as active a PAO as the city does, and so most people in the county don't even realize all the work that the county is doing in preventing homelessness, paying utilities, paying rent, getting people off the streets. I mean, the county is, has a tremendous annual effort in eliminating homelessness. So anyway, I just, what you're doing is necessary. We are behind, I think. I mean, we need to spend our ARPA money, and let's do it right, let's make it look nice. I don't know if that looks nice or not. It certainly looks complicated. I've never seen a fence like that before.
You can't get a foot or a hand in there. That's why they have that fencing up in, yeah.
All right. So I'm off my foot, soapbox, and I know Greg was handing us, you know, number one issue, security is the number one issue, and it goes to our public too, who want to access this place and need to access this place and need to pay their taxes. They shouldn't be confronted with feces or broken windows or burn marks on the building.
Yes, I understand that completely. So let's, Counselor, do you have anything before I move to data?
Go ahead.
Okay. Kristin, will you bring up the 2022 data? And this is, I'm just going to go off the work orders. As we talked about last time, we have a lot of staff that are emailing RIS, emailing Mike, emailing me, Kathleen, about their securities around the campus. And of course, the judicial branch has reached out to us directly, as well as the electeds of what the security looks like in the campus for employees to come here. So you will bring up the, and will you scroll down to the bottom for me, Kristin? So as you can see, this is just vandalism coating. Keep going for me. Oh, you did, you got to the bottom. Thank you, it was on my screen. So this is 2022 costs for just the vandalism coating for facilities. This does not include the daily cleanup that parks comes and does for their regular cleanup. This is just vandalism cleanup or biohazard or garbage or any of those things that are on the campus. So as you can see, for 2022, $59,539 was the cost. I think to look at the hours that staff spent, so that's the number to the left, we had 785 hours that staff spent, and this is not the regular cleanup, this is just to clean up things that were called in, issues that were on the campus as far as biohazards, graffiti cleanup, any of those pieces. So this is the 2022 cost. I will note that 2023 has been a lot more, and I'll have those data points. We've seen an escalation, of course, in the last six months in the campus, as Counselor Meveji mentioned. This doesn't include the glass, a lot of the glass breaking that we've had in the last six months and those costs. But I wanted to get you some of the numbers from the work orders that we have come through from campus. And then I will mention too, and I don't have this on a sheet that Kristin can pull up, but Tyler got me the fleet coding, that is with our fleet in the campus and what that looks like. So we code that specifically when it's a vandalism as well with a work order. So for 2022, we had 104 vehicles that were damaged. Majority was down at this campus, and for the ton of $25,000 was the cost for that. So that's a fleet cost.
How much was it? 125 or 135?
104, 104 vehicles and $25,000.
$25,000.
So I wanted to give that data points, because I know that many of you asked about that last meeting, to make sure we close the loop on that. And I can definitely work with the departments to get 2023 numbers if we need those further for that. So back to, let's bring up the sheet real quick for the fencing and camera, the one that Michelle sent me. So I just want to talk about the fencing piece. Will you go to the tab that says fencing? Yes. So as we discussed the last meeting, so the PSC parking, and this is just a rough estimate because we cannot go out to get a secure estimate until we have money that is earmarked for that, we put in just a rough estimate of $800,000. We know that the fencing around the judicial parking lot that also needs to have two gates on the other side is going to be roughly, Michelle gave me, a number of $200,000, because it's not cyclone fencing. You're looking at a higher grade fencing, as Kathleen brought those pictures up of the PA's office that we did with the gating, and then what the options were for a manual. So I just wanted to put those two numbers up there, but these are the fencing requests that are coming in from our partners on the campus.
And what is the total, if you look at it all, all of the requests?
So the total would be, so we've combined many of the requests that are down below the campus, so you see the forecast on the 2023. So we've combined a couple of the requests down below because those came in from individual departments, so putting it all together on the campus, so Cressa, Medical Examiner, all the way down according to the Lectures Office, plus the gates, we're looking at 800 plus 200, so a million, million. And then, I think, I know you wrote this down, Counselor Marshall, but, and then the overnight cost for the security, of course, would be ongoing $613,000 a year, rough estimate. What other questions can I answer before we go on to the ordinance?
So on that second part, obviously, that would be a sustainability issue and whether or not our public safety sales tax once again comes to the rescue or just the general funding, but, you know, that'll be dealt with every supplemental, every.
Yearly, yes.
Every year, budgeting. Glenn, you had additional questions?
Yeah, I did have a few of them. One of the questions that I'm curious about is, where is the camping being concentrated? Where do we see it happening?
Good question, Counsel Young. So usually, what we see, and the data supports that in the work requests, is the parking garage, the area between Elections and the PSC, in that area, and there's stairwells and stuff like that, so that's concentrated in there. And then right out front in the gazebo, under the gazebo and along the side of the building on this side, underneath the eve, that's where we see the camping the most, and down at the medical examiner's office. So that's where the bulk of the camping is.
Okay, so question, so if you look at the little diagram there, so the area in front of the public service center that is not.
Right.
Fenced.
Yes.
What percentage would you say currently of the people camping on the facility are in that area?
So I would say that's during the day, and I would say at night it moves to the parking garage. A lot of our folks relocate to the parking garage at night, and that's what we see, and most of our garbage and cleanup is in the parking garage, yeah.
And that's probably due to weather, getting out of the elements.
Yes.
I know Counselor Marshall's had many fires in her parking spot.
Yes.
So my next question is, what happens to those individuals when we fence it off? And, you know, what has been mentioned, yes, we do spend an incredible amount of time and money on this problem, but the problem's only getting worse. So it's clearly not enough, or it's misdirected, one of the two, you know, our efforts. So I'm firmly supportive, I mean, we can't have rocks hitting our employees. We, as an employer, have a responsibility to keep our employees safe when they're here and present. So, you know, looking at this, I, oh, I was going to ask also, when we went on the walk.
Yes.
We'd mentioned Washington State Crime Lab. Are they on board with this, or are they not, are they undecided? Where are they at with this?
From my understanding from Michelle, they were moving on with or without us.
They were going to do it anyway?
Yes, because they have the same issue at night with a lot of their techs coming in, they feel unsafe. And I mean, from, I mean, their corner of their, and their gating is what they would be looking at, Counselor Meveji.
Did I ask how they'd do it alone?
Yeah, it would be just around their area that's in their side. But what we really wanted to do, once this was brought to Michelle, with Cressa also bringing their request forward, is to get something that is the same fencing, so it doesn't, is not piecemealed, you know, with each area around the campus. But I also want to say to, for you, Counselor Young, when we were talking about where people are going, I think what we had talked about with the city is if folks are down here in this area, those tend to be the folks that they're going to be engaging for the safe stay, that will eventually go down on, and I think that was February, the last echo meeting that we had listed, so those folks will be engaged for the people around this area to be able to go into that. But we will, I mean, that's a real issue that we have to look at.
So let me augment, and so, council for the homeless outreach teams, co-responder programs, heart program, enforcing the law, all related. When they open up the new Stay Safe, we're going to be within that 1,000-foot reach of city code prohibiting camping. I mean, we don't want to keep pushing people around, and we haven't been. We are offering services to everybody. But yeah, we, I mean, we got to keep on all aspects of providing services, and that includes the additional discussion of this, when is the county going to open its own Stay Safe location somewhere? I think we still haven't, I just started looking at the maps you provided of the hundreds of county properties around the county, but all these things are interrelated. We have to do something, and something more, to satisfy our own employees, but as well as the public coming and going. So with the state lab, which is newly financed over the last few years, are they bringing resources that will, are they going to pay for basically their area?
And I think the map actually shows on the far left side, the option with the crime lab if they were to partner with us, and then they have the option if they were not going to partner with us, which is the circle one on the right or left side on your screen. And I do want to know, we, I'd say five years ago, we had a lot more people camping in our garage and out front than we do now, a lot. Like you couldn't walk out the front doors downstairs. We have fewer people now, but they're more volatile, and there's more things going on. And I know before, as well, the sheriff's. And I know before, as well, the Sheriff's Office did a wonderful job of building relationships with those individuals, and building trust to help them move along during the day. It's a little less success now, I think, due to the status of the individuals who are staying around here. And, you know, this is a fix to help secure us at night, but we're, there is going to have to be more, because this will be open during the day, that's when our employees are here, and that's when they're being affected. So this is not a one thing and we're done. It's a comprehensive area that we need to look at, because we, I don't want employees even to feel a sense of security that nothing's going to happen to them because we have a fence, because reality is, it's open during the day. And so people are still going to be around. So we need to look at all the measures to help support that.
So one other thing I forgot to mention, and we now are running our jail services, you know, we do have people, and hopefully it's not happening today, but in the recent past, people that were released from jail in the dark of the night, right next door, and they're homeless. You know, there was no handoff, there was no plan. That gets to the reentry services that we're going to own. And the success of that is a successful plan with a handoff on, okay, you're being released today, where are you going? Do you have a home? Do you have family? Okay, let's figure this out. I mean, we, so, in speaking with people, some of them are just newly released from the jail-
Right.
-without a plan, and we've got to address that.
In our prior reentry program, I know that they worked on a lot of that with vouchers, and unfortunately, like sleeping bags, because they wanted them to have something when they left. Ms. Looking Bell is addressing that, working with Vanessa and her team, so we are actively working on what that will look like when folks exit the jail. Absolutely, Councilor Mevici, huge. Yes.
Right. I was going to say, I think that having the equivalency of a heart team is critical in this. There needs to be a very clear method and procedure that we take, and not just every individual sheriff's deputy that comes by does something different. There needs to be a standard that's set and followed. And that policy, hopefully, we can work together with the sheriff to develop that I'm still challenged by the fact that there are many people that are sleeping in our facility, and when we fence it off, and they're no longer having access to that, where do they go? So, I mean, it sets the stage even all the more that we need to, we need to work on increasing shelter capacity in our community. People cannot escape homelessness without some form of stability, and I don't believe that has to be completely permanent housing. You can establish stability with shelter, and of course, it's meant as a temporary situation. But as long as people are living outside, we're not going to see any improvements, you know, and there are so many barriers stacked against them from being able to exit homelessness. So it just brings on, we just need to have this as a very high top priority.
Glenn, I appreciate those thoughts, and I agree with them. But some of that narrative is just not true. And a good number of the people that are here, and persistent, and here every day for months, have been offered places to stay. They don't want the rules, whether they're suffering under mental health or drug addiction, they just refuse help. Now, I'm not saying that's the majority, I'm just saying it's some of them. You know, not every encampment is completely housed by addicts, but there's a good portion of them that are, and mentally ill. So ultimately, it gets to, and we brought it up at Echo and other places, you know, New York State, California, other places are now starting to recognize that there is a segment of society where you need to provide involuntary treatment. And of course, our first opportunity at that is within our own jail. That's why I keep pressing on that, because that's a focal point, they're already in custody. Let's treat them, let's help them, let's get them out of their dilemma and return them back to productive members of society. So this isn't an either-or situation. Not everyone out there is there because they have no place to go. Some of them are there because they're refusing the rules and limitations in a clean and sobering environment. I just want to keep putting that out there, because we do get those emails, but don't spend your money on a fence, give it, you know, give them a place to stay. And I don't know if you've seen the budget for Council for the Homeless, take a look at it. You'll see, at least in the past, they've spent a hundred thousand or more on damages to hotels, you know, they give people vouchers, they go to the voucher, and then they set their room on fire, or they punch a hole in the wall. You know, these are issues we have to deal with, not by just throwing money at fixing stuff, but throwing money at helping people get out of their situation. And that may, at some point, be involuntary treatment.
If I could make a few comments. Was there more to the presentation?
The only thing we need to talk about today is the draft ordinance. And so that's the only piece we have left, and then whatever questions you have left.
Right, that might, that might be presented as an option, but I see that as kind of a separate-
Is, yes.
-issue.
It's not the physical security, so I appreciate, Councilor Young, your comment, but it's a multifaceted approach. And as Kathleen talked about, we have the physical security component for our staff and the public, we have the ordinance that we do not currently have that would be on our campus, and we have ongoing dialogue with the Sheriff's Office about how we mirror the city's efforts, and there is conversation going on right now about a heart-like approach. And I won't speak for Sheriff Forge, but there is ongoing conversations on that.
That ordinance would be broader than the campus?
That ordinance would be our county campus, so much like our parks, the ordinance would be for our campus.
Okay, well, setting that aside, I guess my concern with all of this, I agree that there's security issues, and people need to be able to come and go from work safely. So I understand the fencing issue more than I did before. My concern is, though, I would not want, I mean, I think that this public building needs to be welcoming to the public, and that we not appear to be a fortress. Part of the conversation, though, that concerns me, and I don't know, I don't have the data, but associating homelessness with crime, I think we have to be careful in how we talk about that. There may be, that may be the case with some individuals, maybe most of the individuals, I don't know, but I think we have to be cautious about, you know, a public perception that if you're homeless, you're a criminal, or there's something to necessarily be afraid of. So I'd be supportive of moving forward with security measures, in really whatever combination kind of makes sense, because I think the filming, there'd still be a need for filming and for cameras. And I think a lot of this, although we're now talking about it in the context of homelessness, it seems to me that a lot of this is kind of overdue, really, in just where we're at in our society right now.
So you actually need guidance from us? I mean, I'm in favor of moving forward as well. I'm not so in favor of spending money on film on windows, if we put fence and then have more security and more cameras. I think we've solved the problem of the window breakage, but, so, I mean, if we face some of this work, you might find that, okay, well, we've got the fence up, we've got new security, we've got our cameras, it is precious few people who are doing this kind of stuff, and it is not all homeless people. They are, as a group, very divergent in peacefulness and volatility. So do you need any guidance from us? Otherwise, we need to get to new business and complete before we get to our executive sessions. Do you need guidance?
I think the, a good next step, I do want to have Amber go over the draft ordinance, just to get some feedback on that, but we can, and Amber chime in too, maybe the next step is, you know, make sure the PA's office is included, and then do an intentional costing, and bring that to our finance team first, and then come back to say, okay, this is what the costing would look like, and here's options on how we may be able to afford it. So we can do that before, as a next step for Council, if that works.
I still have an additional comment. And we will be, if we fence people off, I don't know what the numbers are, people who have relied on the parking garage for shelter, but we will be displacing them. So I think if there's some concerted effort, they might not have been willing to go for services, but if they're being displaced, there might be more of a willingness or interest in that. And I know I've heard from the people at St. Paul's Lutheran, they're full, you know, so, and they work with a number of these people, they provide services for them. So I think making sure there's enough services for folks that will be displaced by this. I think that's all.
I just have one more comment as well. So I've mentioned this before, but false narrative is not a very good way to have our discussion. I don't believe anything that I said is false narrative, just as I don't believe anything that you said is false narrative. In fact, I believe, and I agree with what both of us are saying, I think we're saying the same exact thing. And I absolutely agree that there are a percentage, we don't know exactly what that is, of individuals that we can offer them every service possible, and they will have no interest in engaging. But we can't iron that out until we have enough spaces available for people to stay. You know, once you have enough beds, then you will unmask that population of people that are unwilling to engage in services. So, yeah, okay, great, looking forward to hearing about the ordinance, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, Kristin, will you bring that up for me? So this is a, so we have worked for the last couple months with our partners, as we talked about, with facilities, with parks, with CCSO, Prosecuting Attorney's Offices on our work group, of putting together ordinance for our campus area. As you know, we sit in the city of Vancouver, they already have an ordinance that is probably almost, we've used them as a model for this ordinance, we already have an ordinance for our parks, so that's been in place for a very long time. So we took those two combinations and made this. And so this is the draft ordinance that would be for our county buildings, to your point, Councilor Marshall. And what I will say, will you scroll down for me to go to the blue? This was added, this is from CCSO. So when asking for their feedbacks for the camp definition, this blue area right here is what City of Portland has actually introduced in their camping ordinance, because it expands the camping definition a little bit more. So this is, again, just a suggestion by the team as we're working through this ordinance, but this is new out of City of Portland's camping, unlawful camping area. And I think it does expand a little bit more past the recreation purpose, and it's more of the livability issues that we see. And I will say too, with the camping ordinance, and as we've been working with the City of Vancouver, and they have expanded theirs during the summer to the Burnt Bridge Creek area, and more of the outside impacts for wildfire and those pieces, that we have community court now, and this ordinance is the final step. And when we're talking about multifaceted approach, this just gives CCSO a tool in their toolbox to be able to utilize on our county property. So I will add that to that piece, as well as, this is not, this is the same, this is almost pretty close to City of Vancouver's, we tried to mirror, and we're going to be mirroring a lot of efforts between the two of us as we look at our campus. Mike, is there anything you want to add to that?
Just the, I had some suggestions, but I don't know where we're at on that, so I don't, maybe this isn't the right place, sorry.
And we, no, it's fine.
So I, from the very start, we've been kind of working on this-
Yes.
-for over four years.
I know.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't have differences between us and Vancouver, you know, from storage policies to-
Yes.
-when you have to take your tent down.
Correct, yes.
I just want to make sure we kind of have a uniform, seamless policy with-
Yes, we are going to mirror, mirror exactly, the only thing that, pretty close, we have the railroad and a couple other things that we need to add in that we don't, that they don't have. But the blue area is what I want to call attention to specifically, because that's an expansion of the definition that City of Vancouver does not currently have. So I want to call that out to the council specifically.
Do we know, is there any particular issues that they're struggling with, that this terminology would help fix?
Yes.
There is?
Yes, so it's not just saying that you're pulling up, putting up a tent to, you know, block, this is blocking a sidewalk, this is laying a sleeping bag out in front of the gazebo in a public area. This expands to, and this is what City of Portland is facing, you know, in the downtown corridor, that's why they expanded their particular definition. But I want to call that out, that that's not currently in the City of Vancouver, want to be clear about that, this is City of Portland's language, but it was recommended by CCSO.
Okay, super. So again, we don't have the full council here, I'm hopeful that we can keep moving forward.
We're moving forward, the next step-
Finally finalize this at some point.
Is to get to the civil PA's office, so Leslie's script, this has not been reviewed by the PA, they need a review for all legality pieces, of course, so this next step, well, the draft will go to the prosecuting attorney's office.
Super.
I just have, I wonder about enforcement, how it's worked with the City of Vancouver, because, you know, concern is that just rousting people continually-
Right.
-it may not help the situation, may make it worse, if it's very selectively applied, or if it's applied when, you know, things just really are getting out of control, how, or what's the intention, or how has that been enforced?
So, great question, Councilor Marshall. So in talking with Jamie Spinelli, and I was involved in the initial stages of community court, community court is really designed around livability issue, livability crimes, so unlawful camping. And prior year, City of Vancouver has heavily enforced the unlawful camping, of course, that was before COVID. The intention is, and Jamie talked about this in our last Law and Justice meeting, for how the city's approach, it is the last resort. It is after outreach, it's after, and oftentimes Officer Chavers is out there as well with this, doing a couple instances. And I know in talking to the campus security, the campus deputies, it would be utilized the same way. We're trying to line, especially in our area downtown, of how we're going to be doing this, and then, of course, this would also be eligible, we hope, for community court if it's passed.
This brings up again why, I mean, it's so critical that we have the equivalent of a heart team, because you can't, if you don't have enforcement, then outreach worker goes out and tries their outreach work, but it doesn't work-
Right.
-and nothing happens. But if you have law enforcement only and no outreach worker, then you end up with a situation that also doesn't work for the community as a whole. So I think it's critical to mix those two things together.
And I think, to your point, Councilor Young, we're looking at it, because it's really our county buildings, we're in the downtown area. So it's really partnering with City of Vancouver, and what Sheriff Forge wants to do with particularly that, because we're talking about our county buildings, the rest of us around us is City of Vancouver. So it's really talking about our county campuses, and of course, our parks, and how we engage in those areas as well.
So I do want to add that the sheriff, the new sheriff, we have a new sheriff in town, he's open all this, and to get something like a heart team, or maybe even a heart team extension.
Yes.
We've got C-MAR right now, with a pilot program with co-responders, really focusing on the mental health with law enforcement. The next pilot program is with our own sheriff. So, yeah, outreach, 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 resources, it's all part and parcel to what we're doing, and we're all kind of rowing in the same direction-
Exactly, yeah.
-within the county and the City of Vancouver. Community court right now is, you know, they did a kind of ad hoc presentation to Law and Justice. They're a huge success initially, I mean, they just started, but they are hugely being successful. So we're hoping for a formal presentation once we have a little bit more time-
Data.
...their belt, and that more case data, and we'll have a presentation at Law and Justice, and probably we'll make that available to the full council in some way. But, yeah, we're, everything's moving forward, but the outreach, outreach teams, co-responders, heart teams, none of this works unless we can have those repetitive contacts with the same people out on the street to bring, find out what they need.
I want to make two points. One, we are not doing this in a silo, Councilor Young, I want to make sure that you know that we are doing, we are outreach- I want to make sure that you know that we are doing, we are outreach-ing, we're talking to our partners, the sheriff's involved in that, that we are, we're not doing this in a silo. The second thing, we are going to be within a thousand feet of a safe stay. So we have to coordinate with our partners at City of Vancouver, because we're going to be within that, in their ordinance and their piece. So we are definitely working through all those areas, just wanted to let you know that.
I'm curious, have we looked into, or would it be even feasible to just contribute funding wise to an expansion of the existing heart team to cover this area here?
I think I will leave that to Sheriff Forge to answer with his intention, because I don't want to speak for him. And I know that as Council Mevige, he's been very open and a good partner in all of this, but I would, that would be a Sheriff Forge question.
So we need to move along. Have, do you think we've covered this old business?
I will, yes. I think we have. Just to summarize for next steps, we'll do the intentional costing finance scheme review. We'll talk to the sheriff's office about heart team, legal review, and we'll look at options for those who may be displaced using community services to see what we can do to help those find other places if we move forward in this.
Just one last comment, and this will be a continual problem. We really don't have public restrooms. And if there's no public restrooms, if there's no place to go, you're going to go outside. That's just the case. So I know there's other communities that have figured out a way to provide that public service. And I know it can create a host of other problems, but it can be designed so it's not a refuge for drug use and things like that. But I just point that out as a community need.
Fire break ordinance 3.1, is that yours?
Yes, so this is just the initial draft for feedback. So this, Council Mevige, you had brought this up, I believe, after we experienced the last fire over on the east side of our county. And this proposed ordinance would change code and simply just add a section in there giving homeowners the ability to trim bushes or trees on their own property and for emergency response, including but not limited to like fire. So apparently there's some potential HOAs out there that are limiting that and it's causing concern or was in the community with regards to egress emergency response. So there's no enforcement, there's no funding needed for this. It's really just giving homeowners that ability through our code.
I think this is a great idea. I didn't know what the problem was, the HOA is, that's the problem. I think that if there was a way to link this to some more specific guidance of if you want to, you know, reduce your fire risk, these are the landscaping recommendations. I don't know, so to give it a little more specificity than just trim your bushes, because I think there's plenty of that information out there.
Yeah, so I think that guidance is already out there. In fact, I'm willing, I just had an arborist come today to eliminate some more trees. I mean, the clearance distance, these neighbors all know what it is. I mean, we could, when it gets posted, it could reference some of the fire marshal and fire district guidance on clearance. And we're not talking old growth, you know, we're not talking gate orchards, we're talking.
It just, it just provides an opportunity to educate people and if there's a ready link that they could link to.
I can maybe add in the whereas's that homeowners are encouraged to reach out to arborists or others to get guidance on what would be helpful in that, if that works. Okay.
Real quick, so I'm supportive of the intention behind this. The only thing I'd be concerned with is being careful of unintended consequences. I want to make sure that people can't cut down trees, that they're not supposed to be able to cut down and say, look, I cut it down for fire prevention. I mean, people will always exploit any loophole they can, so I don't know what we've done to.
So does the council want to be in a position to tell people they can't cut down trees on their property?
Do we not have any of those? I mean, in the urban area, development code requires.
This is a homeowner association issue, trying to enforce, telling neighbors within their homeowner association that they cannot clear their own property.
Where?
It's not just fire. It's, you know, in the winter time, the snow falls and then these trees are overhanging the road and a vehicle can't get through because of the snow laden branches. So this, yeah, I, this is, we didn't create this from home cost. We started with, I think, Skamania County. We took another ordinance that is working without issue in another county. This just gives homeowners the right to provide for their own protection and firefighting distance, fire break, if you will.
I think the only situation where that might be a problem, where you're required to have trees, would be like riparian areas and related to water bodies. I don't know.
I don't think this complicates that at all. It doesn't change any other laws. So if we're not able to move forward today, I'd say we just move forward until we have the full council. Do we have agreement or?
I have agreement, I'm supportive of it, but I would like us to take a little bit more of an in-depth look to look. I mean, if, do, first of all, I'm surprised to hear that we don't have any regulations regarding cutting down trees in at least the urban area of the county. I would imagine that.
People have to have permits to cut down trees. I've done that, we've logged part of our property and so we have to go through the county permitting process. But with, I'll have to look. I know as a homeowner, I've never had to get county approval to add shrubs, trees or not, or cut them down unless it was for logging purposes, and then there's permits required.
Permits for new development, they have to have them. They get a certain clear, a one acre envelope, two acre envelope. Can't cut necessarily down existing white oaks. And I mean, there's, this is not touching any or impacting any other requirement out there for permits.
And I can add that as well as a whereas, that if there is other code that has restrictions on what you can and cannot remove from property, that those are still in effect.
I support moving forward with this.
As long as it puts enough protection in there. And I, like I said, I'm supportive of it because it makes sense, right? I just don't want unintended consequences that we don't expect.
So to that extent, what is the next step? Is there an opportunity for public?
Yes.
That's where you get, okay, you guys didn't think of this, this is the untoward side effect.
Yeah, so I'll add the couple whereas's that we talked about. I will ask April just to do a search in our code to see if there's anything that pops out and then we can move forward and schedule a public hearing for this. This would require a public hearing.
Just on another note, I would be interested in just seeing what our ordinances are with trees. Curious with this question as far as development goes.
So do you want me to send you all the code language that community development?
I'll send you an email and what I'm interested.
Because you can go onto our code laws now and search by names or words. And it lists all of our codes as under code laws.
Okay.
Trees, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just Google trees in Clark County.
Okay, 3.2 charter amendment.
Okay, so this is also, Council Mevige had brought up some potential charter amendments to be discussed, and this is regarding giving it more of a procedure and process and also encouraging, or I wouldn't say encouraging, identifying participation from all elected officials within the county as well as the county manager. And so what I did, you know, and I think the last time we talked about this, I was going to draft some language to come back to just have that discussion. So this has not been approved. But we are, if this is something that council wants to consider for the August or for the November ballot this year, we have to have everything done by August 1st. So I just took Counselor Mevige's suggestions, that he sent an email that I sent to all that re-forwarded to the council, incorporated them in here, just so that you have language to look at, so that you can have the dialogue and discussion and provide feedback. Yeah, it's basically talking about selecting the chair and vice chair and a timeframe for that, participation, like I said, and procedural process such as subject areas, draft amendments, required documentation and their commission meetings. I also did follow up with the elections office, and it could be higher than this, but the cost to put something on the ballot for this year would be between 125,000, 135,000. It could be more than that. This is based on historical information and we've had increase in staffing costs, supplies, and that also will depend on how many state items are put on the ballot that could help reduce some of that.
Well, that's mind boggling. Boy, I thought lumber and steel prices went up. I mean, the last time we talked about an advisory vote on fireworks, it was like estimated to be 40,000 or 50,000. But, so I didn't realize the costs involved.
I just got that.
So the comments I want to make, we kind of heard one this morning, and kind of a misunderstanding entirely of what's going on. But, but one of the areas is the two-year extension of, I don't know where that came from, but Greg Kimsey had also raised the same question I had when I read through the suggestion and the date of August 2nd. The issue was, one, you know, we're not extending the duration of their tenure. Two, their tenure, there was a loophole. Their tenure ends at the end of December. And so they, and now there's, they're on not a 10-year cycle, but a five-year cycle. But the issue, the loophole opened up, well, we're going to be done by December, but we're going to hit a number of general election attempts to make charter amendments. So the cycle went from one year to multiple years, and now they've gone from 10 years to five years. I wanted to close that loophole and I'm not sure the, and I think Mr. Kimsey came up with the same issue. I mean, we, we want to make sure that they're limited to one cycle of elections, not multi-year elections. And I'm not sure we have the language right, because I think he came up with the same issue. I came up with the same issue and maybe that's a PA informed. And here's how you write it. So they're in place for a year according to the existing charter.
Other way. So I did, trying to address that, but I'm certainly open to your guys' feedback. On the first paragraph here, I put the term of office for persons elected to the commission shall end on August 2. That limits, unless I need to expand it now that I'm thinking about it. If I need to say, and you only can put things on the ballot for one year, if we need to be that more specific. But the August 2, it's on section one. That's okay, because that's where it had the two years, that's where it had the one year. And you're correct, they had amendments that they put on the ballot the first year that they were in office and then they finished up other amendments to the end of the year and then submitted them before the end of the year for the following November ballot. So we can provide, if that's something council wants to do, there's two different ways. And I would actually invite Greg to come up and, you know, chat on this as well, if we need to be very clear that it ends on August 2 of that year and ballots can only be on there. Or if you want to do year that you specify it's only on one election cycle.
If I may, before we get too much into the weeds here, I think that the timing is not, does not feel comfortable to me to rush this through. I think you've raised some good issues, there may be some other things that need to be tweaked. For example, I don't know when the term officially starts. Is it right after they've been elected? It is in January, it was confusing to me. But I think it's, I feel like it's just too rushed. And I think if we're going to spend 125,000, 135,000, it'd be good to get a little input and public engagement in this so that there's some sense of, yeah, we need to really clear this stuff up so we get an affirmative vote ultimately.
So I'm interested in getting Greg Kimsey's input on any language changes he wants. We are in a timeline, or we've just abandoned it. I mean, because we are in a timeline. And that's one of the issues of drafting in here, to make sure they're on that same timeline and they can't jump over to the next year.
It's not required that it be, I mean, that they won't reconvene again for at least another election cycle. So it could be not this fall, but the following fall, as I understand it.
So I like getting things done. This is a problem that came up and we watched it unfold with the last charter process. So if we have three votes to move it forward, I'd like to do so, but I want to have the language correct. If, you know, the public is a, they can come up with their own charter amendments. There's a process for that. This is ours. And, yeah, we want to do it in a transparent way and just, and I've already gotten emails about just the mention of it, you know, what's this about? So it is being done in the open, we're not trying to hide anything. We're trying to improve the process. Quite frankly, the outcomes and process last time were pretty poor. I think they could be a lot better. And so that was the intent of this. So I, I'm hopeful to get some further input from the auditor's office and maybe that'll be a separate process. But the 125,000 did catch me by surprise, it's kind of sticker shock right now for me. I mean, I may lose interest because I'm frugal, I don't like spending taxpayer money.
Well, I think that there could be other options. We could pass a resolution or have a directive to the next group that comes on that, you know, to inform their process. There may be other options.
I would just say that I'm not supportive of moving forward at this time. I'm not saying this is the end of the discussion, I would like it to continue. Because I don't think, I think there's a lot of things that I still need to better understand and research and speak to specific people about to get it done. But I'm not quite sure yet that I, and, you know, we can have, you know, Gary, I can speak with you individually as well, but I don't know, I still haven't seen an actual problem that we're trying to solve. But I, I personally think it's, when they have a slew of recommendations to make, I think it's better to.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and take this off the agenda today and we'll address it with the full council. Any council reports?
The only thing I just want to add to that, because of the tight turnaround, it will not be on this November's election, because there's a lot of deadlines we got to do. So, but we will keep it on the list and look at for next year.
Council reports. Okay, hearing.
There was one thing, what was I going to mention? I didn't write it down because I thought I would remember it. I don't know, I'll pass.
All right, work session requests.
Yes, we have one work session request. This is for the Baker-Tilly classification and compensation study. It should not be any longer than 30 minutes. The executive team, which is Amber, the treasurer and the sheriff, will be presenting as well as Baker-Tilly staff and our finance team as well, just to talk high level more about non-represented, high level process and then also high level costing and specifically for non-represented employees. As represented employees, we have to bargain. I do want to note that on this date that's being required or requested on July 12th, we already have two other work sessions that morning. Something for council to think about is if we want to do the two and then this one, which is 30 minutes, and then take a break and start council time at 1:30. That's something that we've done before COVID, is have the two have set start times so we don't have staff or the community and the public sitting through all the work sessions to get to council time. But we are willing to do whatever council desires, we just are hoping to get this 30-minute one on that date.
What are the other two work sessions, just to get an idea?
179.
Oh, that'll take a while.
In the morning. Let me look, another one. We have the Washington workforce economic analysis on the 12th and employment projections for the 2025 comp plan update.
I like your suggestion about breaking it up and having an afternoon sessions that people can come just for that part.
I much prefer to keep them together for my own selfish reasons. But I think this is important for the public to, they shouldn't have to wait. They shouldn't have to wait the whole entire time. I think it is better to split it apart for the public's sake.
Okay, so I'm hearing start council time at 1:30, does that work? And executive session will follow that.
I hate making these decisions with the whole council not here.
We can bring it, actually, we can't, because that's our next meeting, is on the 12th. As I say, we can bring it back next week, but.
Other than that, I'm pretty retarded, I might serve at your pleasure. And I don't like these long meetings that go through lunch and it's not fair to the public or staff. So we have to continue to look at ways to improve this. And, you know, having people sit for hours and hours until they get to what they want to talk about. Anyway, so I would, once again, table this, and I know there may be.
We can have the discussion moving forward with other work sessions. We can have the discussion moving forward with other work sessions. But for the 12th, I need direction then because we don't have meetings next week.
Okay. I would go with what you recommend.
Okay, I would recommend 1:30 to start council time. Well, let me think about it. If we don't have anything on council time or if it's small, we might be able, other than minutes.
Let's, are there, is there anyone objecting?
Okay. Okay. We'll go through that. And then we can talk about future ones. Because I will, and I know I've shared this in my 101s. Our work sessions, we are double booked through the end of August. We have a lot of work going on and a lot of information to get in front of council. So we may want to look at that moving forward permanently on how we can manage it, which is how we used to do it before, which was work sessions in the morning, council time in the afternoon, because there's, there's a lot going on.
We actually have them in different rooms.
And we did.
And it worked pretty well, as long as I remember which room to be in.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Really quick, that did remind me of what I was wanting to bring up again. Council Mevige brought up. I cannot say how much I appreciate having staff in person because I really did struggle to understand what Jenna was saying today. I'm already hard at hearing and I don't know if there was a microphone issue. But having them here, especially when they're a primary presenter, would be very, very helpful for me.
We are still required to do some accommodations. So I don't want to go into detail and I want to provide that flexibility, continue to provide that flexibility for staff and the community. But I hear you and we'll look at, see if there's other options that we can help support council with the hearing then.
Thank you for that. Policy issues?
I think we've talked enough about policy today.
Right, so we have two, still two executive sessions. 10 minutes each under RCW 4230.110, PRN 1, PRNI. We'll come back in approximately 20 minutes. Let's say 12:30 exactly, we'll come back to reconvene.
Did you want to take a break before?
Pardon?
Would you like to take a quick break before executive session?
Does anyone?
Okay.
Okay, we're okay to drive forward. So the attorney will be present and we'll go ahead and go into executive session for 20 minutes approximately. All right, we are back in session after conducting two executive sessions. There's no action required. We're going to adjourn this meeting. Have a great day.